All right, I'd like to welcome everybody out to our city council meeting. I'd like to call it to order. We will start with the flag salute, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. It is okay to call you Jen or Jennifer. Jen, thank you.
All right, so Wesley, here. Mr. Beagle.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
Junior.
Here.
Here.
Isaac.
Present.
Brenda, here, and Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
All right, so we're all in attendance?
Yes.
Let's move right on to the approval of minutes. September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting.
Yes, I have a question to ask regarding those before we go. On the third page of your minutes from September fourteen, in the second paragraph under the city manager heading, I asked that there be a change made, a small change made in the sentence where it says that city manager's manager also mentioned she attended the city commissioner's meeting. She did not ask for discretionary funds. It was the mayor of Hepner, and so I have directed that. And I would ask that the minutes be approved of that amendment.
Do I have a motion? With the amendments to the minutes?
I'm going to move that we set the minutes with the stretch.
I'll say.
Seconded.
Go ahead. I'll see. Oh, second. Is there any discussion about that? Anybody have any discussion they want?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
On public comment, the very last sentence, it says members are hiring. What members? Businesses and boardman or just appointed per?
Oh, I think she was referring to the members of the chamber, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Because I think that was during Renee's presentation, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be her representative. Okay, having hearing done, we'll move on to, oh, we need to vote. So all in favor, we're gonna have to do a roll call.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Beagle?
Approved.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Kiefer?
Yes. So we have, we have approved the the council meeting minutes of September fourteen, twenty twenty-one. Let's go ahead and go to the the boardman, the workshop, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes as presented for the city council workshop meeting on September fourteenth, twenty-one.
Oh, second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion about those minutes? Having hearing done, we'll vote a roll call, please.
Leslie? Yes. Mr. Beagle?
Approved.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Kiefer?
Yes. All right, so we're gonna go to our formal proceedings. We have a public hearing. And we're gonna, public hearing, PAPA zero one, twenty twenty-one, tide water master plan development is going to be the topic. And I will, oh, I did. I don't have, I didn't, what are the rules? I forgot the rules. Is it the did I miss the rules?
Ready, is that ready?
Oh, the red. Well, those are the rules. Oh, that, that was just the agenda for the thing. But I was thinking like the, well, it says commence hearing and announce the purpose of the hearing, which I said, which were gonna be the tide water master plan development. And then it said summarize rules, and I didn't know what the rules were. I know I have, like, is there a certain timeline with all things? You know what I'm saying is? So I'm gonna have to find that out next time I do this.
Well, if you want to say, you know, I'll allow three minutes or something, but I think the night probably don't be.
Okay, so like, for example, if we have a proponent's case, I'm gonna allow three minutes for the, to have people for the proponents. The opponents will have three minutes for individual to do that. Cross-examination of opponents. I'll give you three minutes for that. That would be a if you had public comment, would be limited to three minutes. I think that would be an appropriate rule. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to say about that? Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna call for abstentions. Any member who wishes to abstain from participation may so do so.
Mr. Mayor, you can have a conflict.
Okay, your conflict, is that potential or actual?
Actual.
Okay, with that, is the actual, oh, okay, is that due to, is there a reason for the actual?
Financial benefit.
Financial benefit, okay. So with that reasoning, I find that, this sounds really rude, but I find that you have an actual conflict. And, and you may abstain from this vote and discussion.
Thank you.
There any other counselors who need to abstain from this discussion? Having hearing done, we'll go to objections of jurisdiction. Inquire any objections to the jurisdiction of the council. There anybody for that? We'll move on to the staff report having hearing then.
Okay, on March tenth of twenty twenty-one, we received request from profit-winded partnership, there's zone change variance in preliminary flat, the tax lot one zero nine of all can text now, number twenty-five east, section four, twenty-nine for acre parcel. And it's parcel.
Hey Barry, can you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, it's parcel two of a partition flat, two thousand nineteen dash nine. The lot is currently zone light industrial. The application wishes to change the zone to master plan development. Proposed development is for mixed use of apartments, come many ends, retail, commercial, and a common clubhouse. There will be about, there will be at build out two hundred and forty living rooms. The application is proposing chap, use of chapter four point five, master plan development, which we have not done one of these yet. This is the first one that's been done here in the city of Portland. Master plan development will be operated by homeowners association with covenants, codes, and restrictions within the development. The CCNRs are not enforced by the penalties which apply to the residents of the facilities. And that will be dealt with by a homeowners' association on the project. Type, this type of development increases density from single-family residential of about four point two five units per acre by about two and a half to ten times, ten units per acre. And about half as much as the density of multi-family, which is twenty units per acre. Relevant chapters of development code, which are reviewed during the decision process, include chapter two point four, light industrial district, chapter three point one, access and circulation, chapter three point two, landscaping trees, street trees, fences, and walls, chapter three point three, vehicle and bicycle parking, chapter three point four, public facility standards, chapter four point five, master plan development, and chapter four point ten, traffic impact study. The staff report will be of the review of the relevant portions of these BDC chapters to this particular request. Chapter two point four, the light industrial, which property is currently zones, sets forward the criterion for development of allowable uses within the zone. Would the requested zone change and overlay of this property be changed to master plan development? That would be on both the zoning map and the comprehensive map. Access and circulation, chapter three point one of BDC deals with transportation planning, providing both access and circulation patterns for traffic vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. Chapter three point two entails the regulation of landscaping required, planning of street trees where necessary, and the construction of walls or fences for industrial development. Chapter three point three, vehicle and bicycle parking provides required parking for a development and the methodology for computing these requirements. This parking requirement is for two off-street parking spaces for each living unit. This may be part of land agreement of the HOA or equivalent. And I was still waiting to get the time for the narrative. Subsequently, we've got that narrative for codes, covenants, and restrictions and the traffic impact study that was requested at the planning commission level. In, in, in the, in the staff report, where it was green, it's, it meets, where it was a yellow, there had to be some conditions. That's part of what the planning commission did through their hearing process. And so everything was green except for number five, on page five, number five, the application was not consistent with the standards because of the pavement width. Our pavement width is thirty-two feet curb to curb. And they were proposing twenty-seven feet. Our department had issues with it. They also had a roundabout plan and the fire department resisted on that. The planning commission sent them back to redesign with the traditional intersection so the, the larger vehicles could get in and around. One of the other things that happened is they actually with two cars parked on the street, our department requested that the planning commission cut down the amount of parking and have only parking on one side of the street. So, so the fire equipment can get through. And the developer came back with those redesigns and got the ten fire department signed off and the planning commission sent it forward with a recommendation for approval.
On the, I have a question on number five. Why? So it's still twenty-seven feet?
Yes, but were they, when they went to the parking on one side of the street, which if you look at this cover covered now, there's parking on only one side of the street.
So do we, what are the, what are, do, how do I say this? Do we just, we don't have a consistent measurement for our streets and boardmen, or is it just?
For typical residential, yes, but the master plan development is more designer, that they're trying to create basically a more walkable neighborhood. And so that's, that's part of the reason they went with twenty-seven. And it's quite a bit more compact density-wise at ten units per acre.
I'm just wondering why we hold other people accountable to make streets us one way and then one person a different.
I'm gonna use the sec- master plan development is kind of like Sun River in terms of construction styles and so on and so forth with the mixed uses of his own and so forth. And even Sun River has got fairly narrow streets.
But if we have white streets in town and then our developments are on narrow street, that's okay?
Only in the master plan development sub-district, which is what we're discussing.
Because I think, I don't know, I just thought maybe it would be nice to have consistent street width in our.
And, and, and the residential areas and on most of our streets, that is the case.
That's not residential, then?
That's what?
No, that new develop?
It's, it's a master plan development. That's this.
I guess I'm having a hard time determining what master plan, the difference between master plan development and residential.
Residential isn't anywhere close to the same density as what this is.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
Barry, is this gonna be privately owned streets?
Yeah. We will be taking care of the water and sewer. The HOA will be taking, are gonna be taking care of streets.
So you'll be doing water and sewer, are you doing, are the city doing paving?
No.
So, so who will, so how will it be? Police? Is it gonna be private property or is it public property?
It'll be publicly accessible. It's not gonna be, it's, it's nothing's been brought up about being gated community.
Okay, but that's still not, I'm not sure, maybe I'm gonna ask my question correctly. Maybe an example. At Bella Vista, half of the streets are city-owned, city right-of-way, city enforced with police. The other half of the park is not because it's considered privately owned. And so I'm asking about this. Is this privately owned or is this publicly owned?
It'll be owned by, it, it will be owned by the public, but it will have a homeowners' association, which is kind of like what you have at Bella Vista.
Okay. So the city will ultimately be responsible for these streets. So they'll be the ones that pay these streets?
No.
But when these, when these.
That's all part of the governance codes and restrictions.
In the homeowners' association.
Mr. Beagle?
When the snow flies, who's gonna get in there and tie the snow? The homeowners' association?
I hope so.
Or we won't. We'd have to use small trucks to do it.
And it will be policed by the city of Portland or the county? Is it county?
It's in state.
Okay, so will it be police?
Question.
Are you done, Mr. Beagle?
I am.
Okay, yeah, I did.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's a lot of, like, finite details on, like, the HOA criteria or information they supplied, but I felt like they'd said somewhere in there that they were not gonna be any private security or they weren't gonna be responsible for anything of that sorts. That made me feel like it was the city. And then I feel like because of how they function, they would probably call around and then find snowplows and they would find, you know, people to pave their roads. And I don't think they would call us up. It made me feel like they would, you know, call like a local customer or people as well. I thought, there was mention about security.
But in, in my, in my reading of the HOA covenants, it did not specifically identify or address the issues that you brought up. It was just conjecture.
I always mentioned what my, my takeaway was to see if I was.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, see if I was understanding the.
So I read part of the, I, I remember reading about the electric, electricity being the municipal electrics responsibility and to maintain. And I read the part about the water and sewer, but I was unclear about who was really going to police it and who was going to pave the streets when the streets deteriorated over time. Like twenty years from now, is the city going to be called in to pave these streets? And then that goes back to Mr. Kiefer's concern about it not being thirty-four feet wide. Now you have other equipment you have to work with, et cetera, et cetera. So I was just trying to.
When she's done?
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, I love it.
I, I thought their mention of the two different reserve funds that they had when they mentioned how they were gonna allocate money to certain maintenancees or expenditures. I had an assumption that those funds were in place to cover the roads. The security, like, you know, such, like, I assumed it was the city because they said that they weren't gonna be in charge of that. But they had a, I wouldn't, couldn't probably botch it. They had a fund and then like another fund. And those were there in place to cover costs and maintenance and umbrella without rambling. And so I felt like, I feel like probably with those funds, if I'm understanding that information correctly.
See, I see this as a, I see this as a private entity coming in. And they're gonna, they want to take care of everything. They want the sewer and water, which is, I mean, that part. But once it comes in there, they wanna be what they're doing in there. I, that's a gated community. I don't know. But I don't, I don't see, I'm having a real hard time since it's not a residential. This is a private entity. Hey, we can take, choose who we want to come in, who we don't wanna come in. But yet, we're gonna hold ourselves away from the city kind of thing. That's how I view it, kind of like a privately subdivision that says I'm just gonna be my own little entity here and I'm gonna, that's how I'm viewing it. Now, that's wrong. I need to know that, but that's how I'm viewing it. And thank you for the variance or the, being able to change it. So we make some money off of this, but no, thank you. We only need you when we need you. That's my interpretation of it.
Well, my, my concerns
Absolutely.
are that if, everything starts off with a lot of energy and emphasis on making it happen and look really good. But over time, these things fade and dissipate and fall apart. And without the structure of municipality, it sometimes isn't as isn't as good in reality as it is on paper. Maybe that's why.
That's a good question. I don't have a lot of experience with reading HOA material. I'll ask myself. So a lot of it was just understanding information as it was given to me. Is the things in this HOA, is it a pretty normal set of listings for what they are, you know, because there was, I like what Brenda said. You know, and there was, you know, a mention of structure on voting within the HOA and, you know, keeping hopefully things maintenance and, you know, what Brenda said. But is it normal?
This outline, I, in my read of the HOA, the covenants, codes, and restrictions, they're a little tighter than any of the other governance codes and restrictions that I see on my bus transportation.
Not to say that that's wrong, but.
It, it, I mean, for me, I kind of see HOAs as having those ideas. So, but to see it kind of hammered out in detail, I I can see that. I just didn't know if, you know, I'm feeling what it really is or hey, this is normal and I'm just reading a lot of the small details and something like that.
Because if this isn't residential and it's a community, they can kind of make the, I'm, I'm thinking out loud that they make their streets, then they can choose whether or not they wanna put sidewalks in. They want to choose whether or not they wanna put curbs in. But if it's not going to be a city street like any other citizen would have to be have, that have curbs and sidewalks and other things like that, I want, I mean, and if they're a private entity, then they go ahead and choose that. But I think we need to make sure that. Junior?
Um, just some clarification. So Port Drive is going to the.
That goes to the.
And then this road, is this the marker forty?
That's mark forty.
So is there gonna be any impact on access or anything with marker forty or?
That was the reason that the, the planning commission called for a transportation study after they run the numbers for the two hundred and forty units. Basically, level of service, which is the measurement was still class C, which is acceptable under transportation system.
And then what kind of impact is it gonna have on the highway and heavy? It's, it's adjacent to this property. It will be adjacent to this property. It's not there now, but it's a highway and heavy coming in right adjacent to this property.
On, on marker forty road?
Next to marker forty. Well, it will affect it because of Marine Drive. Right, you're gonna, you're talking about having highway and heavy traffic coming in on the east side of this facility. So if there's that much traffic down there.
Yeah, it's on the other side of the, of the slip.
That's, is part of the slip. So, I mean, that whole area is gonna be impacted because that highway and heavy has to have certain access and capabilities in and out of very large.
That should, that should be.
Isaac?
I have another question. Speaking of impact, I work at the lodge and I know at certain times all eagles nest in those trees during the summer. And I know that from lot twenty-eight to seventeen, if you're just to draw that line, that's a good chunk of trees. And I know that I've seen eagles nest in there before. Has there been a study to see?
There hasn't been an environmental study, but they're, they're trying to leave as many of the trees as they, as they can.
They're gonna wanna see the river, aren't they?
It, it's.
I'm saying, those streets are coming down because it's gonna increase the value of their property if you consider if the trees are on their property. I, I don't know for crack. I just.
I'm just looking at the lots. I mean, that's a huge chunk of trees that are gone. And I'm kind of surprised not to hear that a study hasn't, I mean, maybe it's just something that hasn't been bottomed, but I kind of feel it's important.
It's, it's not our code in running the A's.
It might not go that far along.
Wow, I was, I was thinking there might be a little, I'm sorry. I was thinking there might be a little bit of a give in the boundary, but that's a pretty close line to, to the lodge. They, they might keep some of their grass back there, but.
They're gonna take you back off of that. So where are the navigational markers?
The navigational markers won't do that.
I'm sorry, just showing my experience. I don't know what navigational.
So there's beacons that, that the large traffic use.
Right, okay.
Three, four, or?
Okay, okay.
It's right in the center of your map. Is that the J? So, isn't that what's above tac F? I'm sorry, chief, where are you looking? Right in the center of the map. Is it the colored one?
The tower?
Right here.
So that's the navigation marker?
For sure.
So, so there is gonna be properties between the two navigation markers, so are they going to have to take that navigation marker up? Because those houses are gonna block.
The condos won't, the, the apartments will.
I guess, I would have to see that.
Go ahead. One other question. And I did not see the income range, or maybe I missed it. But is this supposed to be like a lower income? Hi, do we know the expectancy for?
Just the type of development that's probably gonna have more, and the codes, covenants, and restrictions will probably make them higher end home.
I assume, but I just wanted to kind of hear that too. So. So if I was really kind of bent on the idea of like the bald eagles and the impact on that area. What would I say to get us? Wish I, I don't want it to sound like someone saying, well, do you need to request a study? You're saying, you know, that's not in our code, like we're not worried about it? Is that my understanding, like it's just?
Do you, do you environmental aspects of it is not something that's in the development plan that much?
That much, meaning it's kind of in a gray area with what's in the code?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I'm not being sarcastic, I was just making sure I understood what you're saying.
We don't have anything specifically called out.
If I was to request an inquiry on your knowledge, do you think it's something we're looking into?
Yeah, we have to go through another process. Process. Changing the language of the code, which is a legislative decision with the. Probably putting the language together and sending it to the council for approval.
Did we, uh, so that navigational marker is the one that's right in the middle, is that what we determined?
So it says it's the red, the existing tower as soon as what they're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is, and then that's used, correct?
Yes.
So did we get any information back up if this development happened? From the people who use the river?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The Corps of Engineers.
They said it was okay to build.
And Corps of Engineers.
Approved.
The, Ted's not just joined, so the developer has just joined us, so. Maybe you could ask them some questions.
Ted, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Anybody have any questions, Ted?
Uh, we were talking about, I'm mayor, I'm Keith, Paul Kiefer, I, I, we're talking about the navigational mark marker, which is the existing tower. And how does subdivision might impact that tower?
Uh, it will not, we submitted it to the Coast Guard and the Coast Guard has approved all the heights of the buildings. Uh, and that we're well under their requirement.
My next question that we were just, that is kind of repetitive, is this a private uh, community?
No, it'll be open to the public.
So are the streets publicly owned?
Yes, they will be city streets.
So when they deteriorate, who fixes the streets?
The city.
Yes, Mr. Eagle.
Mr. Sanders, I have a question concerning environmental impact. We have nesting eagles in the spring and summer. And looking at your map here, it, it appears that some of the trees are gonna be removed down by the river. To enhance the view of the people residing in, in the dwellings here. Has that study been requested? Or has anything been initiated to study the impact that that will have on our national symbol?
Nothing of that has been requested of. Because the property we have doesn't go to the river. Um, and so anything outside our property lines, we will not be removing any trees or vegetation that, at all outside the property line.
So this is the mayor, Mayor Kiefer, I uh, got a concern about the width of the city streets. Uh, these are city streets and I am kind of uh, struggling with. Allowing somebody to change the width of the street that other citizens don't get that choice. And uh, that's kind of a sticking in me a little bit. And then the other thing, I, I didn't see anything about sidewalks and curbs.
Yes, there are sidewalks and there are curbs. Um, all that's on the civil plans that have been submitted uh, to bury in the city. There're sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Okay, uh, are the curves like flat curves or rounded curves, are there gonna be? A little.
They're not flat curves or called. Yeah, they're not flat curves, but they're not the big tall extruded curves, they're kind of a manable roll type curve.
Yeah, that's janky. Sorry, but that's janky. Yes, what? Oh, on that one?
Ted, my name's Brendan Prophet, I'm one of the counselors, and I have another question for you, if I can back streets for a second. As the developer, you're putting in all the streets, sidewalks and curbs, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, I can move on to my. Is there any other questions about the staff report? All right, uh, I guess this would be the proponents case, that would be, uh, Mr. Sanders, do you have anything you would like to say?
Um, no, I, I guess not, not at this time, I mean, we're very excited about the project and moving forward with it. Um, and think it'll be a great benefit to the city and for the whole market out there.
So I guess, uh, oh, I don't get to talk, that's proponents case. Is there anybody who wishes to be on the opponent's case that would like to speak?
Hey, Paul, this is Lisa.
Lisa.
I just wanted to let you know that the port is a strong proponent of this project. Uh, we've been working hard to get the land um, to the point that it's able to transfer. And it's gonna be a beautiful housing project for Boardman.
Is there anybody that wishes to be the cross examination of opponents? I guess that's my, that, I, I've got something to say here, I just was sticking in me. And I already said that and is, I've looked around at our other cities or other community, or in Boardman or other communities. And. I just don't like the narrow streets. And I just, if it's a community street, that's, I'm struggling with that on a community street this narrow. And, and whether you are a public citizen trying to go down a narrow street. It's not very enjoyable and I, and could I get, then the curbs and the sidewalk, the curbs bug me. That, that's the other thing that is sticking in me just a little bit, not saying I'm against this. This subdivision or this community development. But when we have citizens who have to fix their sidewalk, they gotta fix the sidewalk and curb the way that. I don't know, maybe it's a standard curb thing, but I, I, I just think it's, I just don't like it. I, I think we should have the correct width of streets and I think we should have a correct. And not say that there is a, a difference of curb. Cause I see this style of curb in other subdivisions and I don't like that. That's my opinion only. Anybody else that needs to say anything?
I would just like to reiterate that I am not okay with the fact that a study wasn't done on the tree area. That's, I mean, out of everything for me, that was a, a big question, everything else seems very agreeable. And, you know, the roads I know is up in the air, but. I'm personally a little frustrated to hear that, and I think there should be more time on that detail.
Thank you, Isaac, I, I'm not saying, I don't wanna say that the roads and the sidewalks are a deal breaker, but gosh darn it. I, I, it, it's frustrating to me that we, we allow a road to be made narrower. I, 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 I think it should be, should keep our streets standardized. I don't, I, this will be the first. One of these that I've done since mayor, I didn't, wasn't involved in the other ones and. I'm just kind of stuck on that a little bit, is it a deal breaker, is it worth losing lots of money to people, I don't know. Yes, Ms. Prophet.
I'm, and it's, maybe it's too late for this, but is there a compromise, like the two main roads, what are they? Uh, Shoreline Drive and Tidewater Way, could they be at the standard thirty-four and do the beacon lane and anchor lane at twenty-seven? Whether it's more internal or a smaller um, traffic potential? And do the main road at, the main stretch at thirty-four? Ted?
On a developer's point of view, I mean, it's a total redesign and that extra width totally changes all the setbacks. And will probably not allow the development to move forward based on the width of the property. Um, and those road widths. Um, I mean, the narrower roads help reduce the speed, it keeps the speed down, it makes it a much safer, more walkable neighborhood. Uh, and that's really what we're trying to do is to make it a much more walkable area. So that all the interconnecting greenways and pathways from the park to the river. People can walk it without having to worry about higher speed traffic. Um, and so that was kind of the reason we designed it with narrower roads was to reduce the speed. Uh, and um. Massive amount of asphalt to keep more green space there. And it greatly reduces the long-term maintenance and upkeep of the road by having narrower roads. Cuts the cost down probably more than thirty to forty percent.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, uh, Mr. Eagle.
So is there a proposed speed limit on these roads?
Typically, I would propose a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
That's, so that's a typical neighborhood speed.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, so public agencies, there are some agencies that wish to speak at this time? Do we have any rebuttal evidence? I guess that would have been, uh, Mr. Sanders was saying, is there anything else that you would like to say? Uh, Mr. Sanders, before we close this hearing? That you maybe not have, haven't, that you haven't said?
I don't believe so, not at this time.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you answering the questions.
No problem. Sorry I was late, uh, the two hour time difference, I forgot and wasn't paying attention to my clock here.
No, glad to have you, welcome, thanks. Uh, all right, so we'll need to. Close the hearing and deliberate by the council, so we're gonna, we need to uh. Make a decision and say our findings about what we want to do on this. And I hope everybody knows, well, if it's going to, if we're going to approve this, it must be unanimous. In order for this. To pass. Absolute favorite crap here.
Is there, is there a reason why it has to be, I mean, I get that Leslie's abstaining, so, but is there a reason it has to be unanimous?
I was told it had to be unanimous because it's an emergency meeting.
So it's, so that we can get that in moderate view and.
Correct. So if it's not unanimous, then it would not pass. Due to the emergency meeting. So do I have a motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think. Probably, after you've done your hearing, you need to go through the rest of your agenda and then you have the option under ordinance, it's three dash twenty coming along. To go into that, but if you wanna.
Don't we do our public hearing, don't we vote on the public hearing here? We need to probably tell them how to, we need, out of our, out of our public hearing, we, we need, don't do vote on, we, we need to make a decision?
Not sure you get down to the.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So we just did the formal proceedings to figure out what we're gonna do and now we got this amount of time to figure out how you're gonna vote.
Well, you can have more discussion and get to that ordinance.
Because we're gonna have a, yes, we're, gotcha. All right, so we'll move on, I think we've, uh, did we get everybody introduced that has popped on? Do we know everybody that's on there, know everybody that's on there? Pretty sure we do.
That's my wife, oh, okay.
She ready as your wife? I think you told us that last time, wasn't it? Yeah. This must have been such an exciting meeting, my wife signed up. She got, she sees enough of me. Financial reports. Do you have a financial report?
No, we do not have one for this month.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't check my email, sorry. That was one thing I needed to get to. Uh, public comment, is there any, buddy, I guess we'll go with, uh, let's just start with Renee.
All right, so we have our luncheon this month for the chamber, it'll be in person at the Riverfront Center. On Wednesday, October twentieth at noon, and we'll have lunch catered by Sunrise, Sunrise Cafe. It'll be a round table discussion with everyone in attendance, given the opportunity to update on their business. Registration is required by Monday, October eighteenth on our website. We'll also be hosting another Chamber After Five networking event on Thursday, the twenty-eighth at five P M at the Sage Center. We'll have cheese boards and fresh apple cider for attendees to enjoy, and it's a free event for all community, community members, even if you're not a chamber member. Uh, the chamber will also be hosting another trunk or treat this year, since it was a hit last year. Uh, it'll be on Halloween night at five P M in the Sage Center parking lot. We're planning on having it be walk-through this year, and we do still have spaces available for anyone or any business interested in handing out candy. And if you want to uh, be a part of it and hand out candy, you can send us an email at info@boardmanchamber.org. The Sage Center has some pumpkins left over from Harvest Festival, so when you stop by for a visit, you can pick up a free pumpkin while supplies lasts. U E C is doing a customer appreciation lunch tomorrow uh, at their Boardman location from eleven to one. Where they'll be giving out free lunches and raffle prizes. We also have over two hundred jobs available throughout Moro County right now. Those could be found on the Chamber website as well as the Port of Moro website. Uh, you can visit both of those websites to see full of this job descriptions and how to apply for them.
Thank you, Renee. Is there anybody else that would like to have some uh, public comment?
Uh, yeah, Mayor Kiefer, I would, uh, this is Dawson Quinton.
Hey Dawson, welcome.
Hi. Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to, uh, I, I introduce myself to you and obviously um, Karen as well, but I just wanted to introduce myself to the rest of the council. Um, just say hi, I just was kind of listening in to uh, tonight's meeting, I just kind of periodically go around to uh, some of the communities um, in Rep Smith's district, so. Um, you can ask me any questions if you want, I don't think I really have any updates for you and um, I'll drop my uh, phone number in the chat in case anyone wants to. Um, to, to look at, you know, to take that down and call me if they have any questions or anything like that, so. That's kind of all I had, but I just wanted to introduce myself and say uh, hi to everyone.
I got a question for you, Dawson.
Uh, sure, go ahead.
How much impact or input do you have on throwing some money our way through uh, Mr. Smith?
I don't know, cause you got a bunch of other communities fighting for it and if, uh, if you paid attention to the redistricting process, we've uh. I don't know, because you got a bunch of other communities fighting for it, and if, uh, if you paid attention to the redistricting process, we've, uh. Uh, Rep Smith will be adding some more, uh, some more communities as well, so some more people fighting, but. I can, uh, always, uh, you know, take the projects that you send our way and make sure Rep Smith sees all of it and sees all the details, but. That's all I can really say for that.
I, I make pretty good cake, so if you can get some money towards this, I know it's not a whole lot, but you could, uh, I'll make you a cake. A homemade cake. I don't know, it's a zucchini carrot cake, they're pretty good. But thanks, thanks, thanks for coming, Dawson.
Yep, of course.
Is there anybody else who has some public comment that they'd like to share? Okay, having hearing done, we'll go down to our action items, which is. Ordinance two dash twenty twenty-one, Eastman Vacation Northeast Columbia Avenue.
So Dawson left his number in right now.
No, this card.
Five four one. Nine nine three. Five two three six.
Do I have a motion on ordinance number two dash? Twenty twenty-one?
I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number two dash two twenty twenty-one. An ordinance taking so easily create that original fat of the Sealon Senior Industrial Park.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. How about any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Having hearing done, we'll do a roll call, please.
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kiefer?
Yes. So we'll go to ordinance three dash twenty twenty-one, P A P A zero one dash twenty twenty-one, Tidewater Master Plan Development. I would say no, we know that you're not going to be able to vote, but thank you for announcing that. Due to. The. Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-one, and ordinance approving the post acknowledgement plan amendment. Zero one dash twenty twenty-one, many more zoning compromises plan now.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion that we'd like to have that we haven't already had? Roll call, please.
Leslie's abstaining.
No.
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
No.
Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kiefer?
Yes. All right, so we don't have a unanimous. Vote. So that would be four to two.
That's still the majority.
You're fine.
Okay, so it passes with the majority vote.
There's six of you.
There's six, four to two, that's majority. Okay, resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-one, San Worthen Elementary, right turn only.
I move that we set resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution to establish, maintain, and enforce the right turn only egress from San Worthen.
And I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. And that question right there was, I, I was once, the discussion was, uh. The purpose and why of that. I have nothing about. Why this came about or purpose of it.
So at the beginning and end of the school day, it's Sam Worthen, and I have been there for about two, three years, hold to. Even years ago, if somebody tried to make a left turn, there's so much traffic going this way and so much traffic going this way, and. There's a backlog of it that gets stuck in the parking lot. And it's a safety hazard for kids, it's a safety hazard for adults, it's. It's a safety hazard for people who are trying to go up and down this road.
I get that, but I was looking for something from a stat on why. And not to say that you're wrong. I was, no, I'm not saying that I didn't want that. I was like, I wanted to know the purpose and the reason. Because I get that, but this is the first I've heard about it.
Last, last year, the school. Basically made one way, one that enters is purpose of the west.
Like the start of COVID.
About that times. And so it's one way through the parking lot. And. It backs traffic up, so across the ambulance, all the fire hall. For about fifteen minutes every afternoon.
I remember that.
And making that right turn out. See, because of the other streets that we put in and around the schools. That right turn out can get back in. To, uh, other streets and. We leave some of that to impression.
Three ranks make a left.
So it's to increase flow?
It's, it's to increase flow to keep. Emergency services available during that time of day.
I got you, and I, and I didn't, I just want to apologize to Ms. Prophet, I didn't. It came across wrong. But that's, I was interested into what you were saying, but I also want the experience. I was looking right at you. I was looking at you, and that's what I, and that's what I wanted to know is your, it was your opinion, but I asked you, wanted to know the. The, the legal or the. Staff or institute, so, which was the same. Yes, Mr. Beagle.
We have a question, um, when the fire department and emergency services move. Is that not going to alleviate potential?
Based on this, what I see is the school population. And the amount of people that are picking their kids up in cars, no, I don't think it's going to alleviate the problem.
If at certain times of the day, you can only make a right turn in this town. Doesn't matter where you are in this town.
Mean like local east runs?
Like anywhere on, anywhere. At three thirty.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Chief Mayor, a, a part of the reason for having a resolution. Is we can't force that right turn legally, we cannot. Issue a citation. Or that I turn until we have the actual law, so that's what this is.
That's it. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes, Mr. Kiefer?
Yes. Motion passes. Let's see, then we're at the police report.
So everybody should, I think it announced, uh, everybody should got. Of the police report. Fourth month of September, are there any questions about? If not, I did want to follow up on Counselor Kiefer's question about July. So, uh, for July, there were twenty-seven people arrested in that month. Eleven of those were for criminal mischief, three committed by one offender, so. That's a, a good majority, why you saw it, like a number above and beyond. Uh, there were, I, I, I don't know if you really want me to break them all down, but the big case was the, uh, eleven, uh, offenses by the graffiti owners. So, question. Of those eleven charges. Was the individual charged with all eleven, or did they plead or? Barring down to one, it depends on what we, their issue. Oh, that, it, it's all been turned over to the district attorney. Um, that individual, based on the amount of damage done, was charged with felony. Uh, with the hopes that. He would help. Well, he would help with the other individual that was involved with him, uh, his cooperation is pretty imperative. He doesn't want to see you do that, so that's a discussion between him and his attorney and the district attorney. It's out of our hands. We just turn it over to them. Any other questions about those?
Building Department report.
Things are going on about the same. The material storage is still. Um, air conditioners are hard to get, just AC, they're already kind of. Pipe, wire, all this stuff is just. But, uh, we're still, you know, following law. And also, the, uh, two thousand twenty-one residential code took effect. October first, last Friday. There was one big change where the furnaces and wire heaters and ductwork all have to be inside the heated envelope. So it's gonna be, it's a big change, and it's gonna be hard.
Building Department. I know we got it in front of us.
Okay, well, I don't want to appear silly, stupid, but there are twenty-seven permits for building apartments for new home construction. And third floor meters this year so far. So I just curious.
By concrete truck, yeah, or at sheetrock trucks.
I'm the public works Kevin. As above late tonight, so he can't be here, so I think that, uh. Like say, it's pretty self-explanatory if we read it.
I do have a question, it's about the, uh, I know it's more B C D A, but the. The basketball hoops, is the, is the city gonna put those in or in conjunction with the?
We, we have them or, and when they get here, and we're thinking pretty soon, actually.
Yeah, because I think it was, it was projected to end about October was the plan, but I, I was just, uh. I figured you, the hoops were off order, but is the city's gonna work in conjunction, city's gonna be the one putting those in, correct? Or conjunction with somebody else, or?
I think, I don't know, I think it's probably in conjunction with whoever has time.
Sounds good to me. I, I, I was just, uh. I thought it was pretty cool with those that I know we talked about that that was gonna happen, that's kind of cool that those. Are being, uh, now they're supposed to not be as slick, is that correct?
Yes, and you see how much bigger the one at the city park is.
Oh, it's huge.
Yeah, compared to what it was.
Uh, I'm excited, I.
Well, there's so many kids in that neighborhood, they should.
Do you have any double hoops or just one?
Yes, no, I think double. I think both.
Both ends. Oh, Lisa.
Hey, it's, it's. I, I just wanted to say, you know, we thought that that was a really great project for our community, but if you can think of other ones like that. Please let B C D A know.
All right.
My wife said a lot of good things. We can do something like that, so good, so good. I was there the whole time, and it's just like built around like agricultural.
It's burned down twice. Oh, it was three times, three times? I remember two, twice. Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Um, uh, I, I read the public works, numbers and banks, and, and. I, I'm not sure I, I understand, it says there's nine hundred seventy-nine meters red. And how does that play into September nine sixty? What is that nine sixty number?
It's gonna consistently.
Well, well, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to say is nine seventy-nine meters read, so. Is, is that the total number of meters installed since January, but if you look at January, it's at nine twenty-seven. So how is nine sixty related to nine seven-nine, or is it related?
Jim?
I think if you look at the list above, it says there were two new meters installed. And then it says total for the eighteen meters installed is thirty-four, easy goes up from ninety-eight to ninety-sixty, which is two.
I think what Mr. Beagle's saying is we count nine hundred seventy-nine meters, but we got nine hundred sixty meters in brown.
Oh.
Yeah, so there's, there's gotta be some logical. Yes.
Um, if we have a customer call who says my water bill is too high, I think something's wrong. We will send public works out to go re-read the meter, so I think that includes all the re-readings as well, and that's why that number is always higher than. How many meters we have.
Well, to prevent confusion for an old person like me, can we not put re-reads also in that line?
So would you like them separate, because this is the summary of their work?
Well. If it says meters read, okay, that's great, but meters read, re-read. I mean, it's just what, six letters added? On that one line? That way I understand it a little better, or am I gonna ask questions every month? I, I tend to forget things, you know, old pages.
I will take that back to our utility clerk.
Thank you.
Who's, who's the utility clerk?
Tony.
Oh, Tony is.
That's all I have on this one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the two reports that we've talked about? Works or building department? Do we have a committee report? Then we'll go right to, uh. Mr. Carter group.
Okay, I put in your packet, uh. That the court has asked, and I showed you the map. Uh, they're going to expand the Sage Center with a convention center. And so you see the map that they're closing, and they would like to trade us for an acre of. Lagoon probably for that ten acres. Uh, that we have up there on the corner of Olson. And, uh.
Next to the dog park.
Yes, yes. And they'll, it, they'll, I'm sure that it won't be long until they're moving dirt over there.
So they're asking for the green part?
Yes, that's the green part.
And that is for what? You said, uh, parking lot?
Yes, they don't use it for a parking lot, for overflow parking, because after they take up so much of their lawn on, uh. On new addition. They are, they think that, you know, when five hundred people come to. To a convention center, you're gonna need more parking than they have for sure there.
So do we need to, uh? Do a motion or something like that to give you permission, or? I almost, I almost think that we need to, uh. That way it makes it, uh.
Yes.
The perception that you're just not wheeling dealing underneath the. Even though there might have been wheeling and dealing going on, uh, you brought it to our attention, and we're gonna vote on it, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second to the so moved motion?
A second.
Good luck, I love it. Uh, is there any additional discussion on the so moved, uh, motion?
The motion should say that we will trade an acre of property where the lagoon is going for this property.
So are we actually trading, or are we just gonna buy and buy back?
Yes, buy and buy back, we're gonna write checks.
We have to write, we have to write checks so it's legal.
But we, we don't care.
I would like to. We care. We would like, I would like to move that we purchase a plot of land from Port Memorial for our future boom. And that at some time in the future, the Port Memorial purchases a plot of our land, so there will be parking. If they sign.
That's it.
And I have permission to. Sign the papers. And Karen has permission to sign the papers.
That is such a boring, but that's so legal. Can we have a second, is that correct?
Right.
And I don't think we have any discussion, so we'll do a roll call. Just having way too much fun, and lost all my galia.
That's like, yeah. Mr. Beagle. Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
For that.
Yes.
Yes, please. All right, is there anything else you would like to share?
Yes.
Okay.
The Gerald Green from the county came the other day to see me, and they are looking for a place to have the. County public transportation, um, bus farm, and they were looking at the BMCC lot, but they. Didn't realize that BMCC was already built on that lot. And so they were wondering about the next two over, and I think that I, I talk to people that want those other key lots. So I, I would hesi-, I would hesitate to sell them now, uh, to the county or, uh, bus farm. Because that, uh. That's prime, that's, uh, prop- property for. And we didn't discuss advice or anything like that, but.
Do you have anything else that would work for them? Like how on Tower of?
Oh, no, I never thought of that, but I'm sure they'd want to be on Tower of.
Good place.
Well, they want to be, uh, they want to be visible on the freeway, and so to. Sort of be honest, I recommended the Catholic Church, that they had bought a lot of property, maybe they would like to sell a little bit of it.
This is a bus farm, is this for the, like, the, the bus that goes back, for, with the bus farm for what?
Well, uh, public, they're trying to get public transportation set up so that they can run a regular route from Boardman to Hermiston. You know, like, say, four or five in the morning, and then, you know, pick up. Workers along the way and then come back and drop them off, and then after that's done, then they'll just run regular route. Because they, and this is, this would. I don't think I brought my mask, but this would, uh, this wouldn't, this isn't a, like, the bus barn that's over here to the. Senior Center, it's, it's a nice, like, maybe five-day, you know, with, and it would probably have a restroom and stuff in it.
Maybe we could hold that in, uh, use that as a pawn so that they can help us when we, or we can help them when they wanna help us.
Yeah, so, but I just wanted you to know that they had been here and talked to me, and so that, you see, I put in the, the advertisement for the city deputy's.
Again, I have a question about that.
Okay.
So what's your question? Um, where it talks about the community, and it says, you know, it's. Puts us in glowing light, and it said, and mountains and river pools. I don't recall these mountains close by.
I can see three mountains from miles.
Mountain or hill?
See Mount Hood, I can see Mount Adams and Mount Rainey.
Oh, and that's, that's a draw for us here?
I can tell you as a, as a customer, as a employee of the lodge, it's a huge draw for us here.
Mountain, yeah.
Especially if you get along on the river and you can see Mount Hood and the sunset.
Wonderful view.
Beautiful.
Dog cat all day. I, I can show you pictures after pictures that I've taken of them.
Is that the only concern you have, Mr. Beagle?
That's it.
Well, they have trees in there too, and they don't take trees out.
Did they, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we do have trees here.
Well, we do, but I don't think, it's not like the trees are, it's a forest, and it's, uh, something.
Yeah, that's.
National Forest.
And the only other thing that is different on the date is November seventh would be their last day to apply. So, and it's on their website, they're posting it, uh, as a subject, so, uh.
So we changed it off on the thirty-first and ninth, so?
Yeah, yes, because they didn't get it in last week, so they wanna make sure that we have plenty of time to get, uh.
I really like the, the change of the pictures in the focal point of the city hall, being in the middle, the marina, I love the river, uh. You know, we have a picture of the Port of Mar, I, I like the, the front, because I really, I think those are good. Really left Wordman is about, kind of, and, uh, they're way better than the ones that they had in there before.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I, I, I was, I was pretty impressed with, uh, some of the things that they did.
Right.
No pictures of the mountain.
No, but.
Lots of trees.
We've got, uh, I have six pictures, we got six really good pictures of what Wordman's all about.
Well, if you look on the, like, on the computer, they're really lovely pictures.
Oh, I agree.
You know, I mean, they're much better than they are printed up in this printing, for sure, so, uh.
All right, so we, uh, are to our counselors, anything the counselors would like to share?
Ms. Mayor, yes, real quick, under the committee, uh, it's probably something we need to start talking about, like, uh. Christmas is coming upon us, and usually we have a Christmas decorations. And I know somebody who's not here right now, but he's on the camera, who, uh, was over there.
I am no longer able to do it, guys, my job has changed.
Senator?
A lot more, so. Sorry, so they don't take that over.
I don't even know what, uh, what the plans are, really haven't discussed it, but we probably need to start thinking about it, Karen, do you have any thoughts?
I haven't even thought about it.
You can't talk about Christmas.
But, but.
Probably when one, November's.
Oh, it is November, who are we gonna hire to do it?
Well, there's no hiring, the committee is volunteers.
Uh.
And, oh, you did a nice job in your yard last year, and I remember that, I said you were gonna be the man.
I know. I, I will pay somebody. We have billions of dollars, and our coffers. I know, we will, we will pay somebody. Uh. Anybody, any counselors have anything they'd like to share? Yes, that's it.
Ladies first.
Thank you, um, I'm just wondering, I get a lot of questions about all the ground that's being booked here, and I can only speak up to the housing. Um, what else is coming and happening here, especially right behind the clinic? And. Are we, at what point are we allowed to share that information? Or find that information?
What's interesting is that is the Dollar General, they bought their permits, and probably three days were moving stuff in. They waited till the last minute to buy the permits, and you think you were not allowed to tell until they made, you know, the rumors are great, but.
Well, exactly, it would be nice to address them upfront, I'm, I'm curious as to how we ended up with two, almost practically three dollar stores within a stone's throw or anything further in our community.
Well, they, if, if they buy a permit, and they can buy property from anybody. That's free enterprise, and.
Do we have something in our comprehensive plan for our community that identifies with. Some of the retail shopping centers and whatnot that we would like to attract going forward?
We did a downtown study, you know, probably twenty years ago, and, and had some things, you know, and there's some things like, like, to be honest, the B C D A. You know, we worked really hard to try to keep a beauty shop. And got one in common in COVID came.
Right.
And so, if you. If we know that things are really important, I think that there's, you know, as a community, we should work on it.
Yeah, I would, I would like at some point, and we discussed it briefly, getting together and planning our objectives at the councils, especially now that we're new, and maybe we. Just touching on some of those things during an upcoming workshop, would be my recommendation.
And maybe we should really think about, um, B C D A and the city usually have what we call the community enhancement meeting. And before COVID came, we all went to a meet, a room, and. You know, six people would sit at a table, and none of us had the same ideas, and they're very, they seem to be really productive, and I think it's really time for you to get.
I agree.
Because like Lisa was saying, if we have ideas. We do, we need to spend the money and get them, get them accomplished and move on to the next thing.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah. Was that your answer, Barry?
Well, that was gonna answer the other question, barring the clinic, that's, that's a subdivision that's gonna be, there's gonna be sixty units in four places.
Is that the one that's.
Oh, that's one of my favorite.
Is that the southern hallway?
Romanee hallway.
Okay.
And the one behind the lab, or the clinic, or the?
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy.
That's, that's the Dollar General.
Okay, that's. Um, I was approached by someone who walks their dog and has had, um, multiple instances of, uh, broken bottles and glass behind the roof. And I just said I would find out how often. We, it was right around this nature, but how often we clean our roofs, how, how are the roofs wet? I, I said I would get some answers, and I, I didn't have that, so.
Well, look at your public works report.
And let's see if they put it on there, because I do know that they started trees today. And.
But the streets are dripping with the walkways, because we can't get the back truck on the walkway.
Right, we are talking, we are talking about sidewalks and such.
Oh, it's on the sidewalk, I, we don't sweep the sidewalks, except for, we'll help share again.
If, 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 if they see, if they see it, they.
Right.
Go over and, and just, uh, get the grass off and the walkways as well.
I would probably, my suggestion would be that if they saw it, when the city hall opens, they'd make a phone call and say, hey, I was walking, this is what I saw, and I would. I'm almost a hundred percent somebody from the city would go and drive by and take a look. So that, and if I just spoke, I would, uh.
We.
I, I have full confidence that our staff will do that.
That was supposed to be advice I gave, but I did say I would, I would ask.
Absolutely. Is there any other questions or comments?
I had somebody stop at my office this past weekend asked about the Kala Road and the traffic studies now that school's in session, and weekend traffic study. That was. Very concerned, so I was wondering if you all knew, and I had the idea. What were those, the traffic strips?
Oh, yeah, they were doing that, weren't they, Dave?
Yeah, well, so the last time we left, it was a question about coming back after school starts and doing the. Traffic count, again, or on weekends, since there's a lot of people who use the. Um, pay-for public transfer, you know, like the infinite bands. So maybe there'd be more traffic on the weekends, it was just a question. I don't know, you, you said you were gonna do it again, but I, did they just ask if that had been discussed yet?
We're, we're, we're putting down more, we have them this week, but. You know, we're, we're doing all, one day at a time, three days during the week. We basically made it through all of them, they weren't, or we're probably gonna start them over again.
Do we, do we have an idea of our expectation when that'll be kind of rounded up? It seems kind of not this week, that week, not that, this week.
It all depends on the work schedule we've got.
Thank you.
So Barry, you had your hand raised, you had something.
I just wanted to, for those of you that. Uh, don't have the flash dry some few tonight, if you can drop them back off, like, soon at all, we'll recycle them through, we'll get other bigger projects, you know, other big projects. So you guys can, uh, utilize the flash drive for the end.
All right, I had one comment that I wanted, there was more question, so that, that Dollar General's gonna go in. Where's that access going to be?
And to share the access with the pharmacy.
On the west side of?
On the south, on the south side of the pharmacy.
So the southeast side.
So how is the truck that's loaded gonna get in there?
The, the truck basically comes down, turns into the bank parking lot, and backs in, as the, the, uh. Loading or unloading goes in the east side of the building on the south side. I've seen bunches of trucks in there already.
I, that's the part that they put a little bit of gravel down, that's where they're gonna get in, right?
Well, the, 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 the rock that's in there now is required by V E Q's, uh. C nine hundred ver-, or C twelve hundred permit, has to knock any mud coming off of the vehicles coming out of there, so it doesn't drag out into the streets. So you guys are gonna really get a little bit flat.
Does that access seem janky, I mean, janky, it's just seems.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit bigger than what it is right now, but that, that was, that's right on the property lines.
So. If a truck is loaded, it's coming, naturally it's not gonna be a fifty-three footer or forty-eight footers, the thirty-two footer is smaller. They're gonna block that street.
Mostly.
I mean, to back in. Is what you're saying.
That's a, well, that's apparently all, they have a way to get into, there's, there's a way to get in.
They're gonna pull in by the grocery store, put on their flashers, and jack night with in, back into.
They'll, they'll come off of, they'll come off of Main Street.
Right, and, and turn down by the, by the grocery store.
No.
No?
No, they turn like by the bank, or not the bank, but by the.
Backside of the, of, of the pharmacy.
Pharmacy.
There's a little bitty, there's a little bitty path there.
It, it's.
It's going to be bigger once they look.
It's, it's gonna be a hokey looking thing, and I, I, maybe I'm, I, I don't know, maybe we'll be looking like, I just don't know why it's not off Main Street.
Why it's not the property they bought.
It would be off Main Street.
You gotta turn in and then take a left, take a right, and then you turn in.
No.
No, it's.
You're not gonna be on Main Street at all.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, so you, you got the, there, there's already pavement or asphalt there for the drive-through.
Yes.
They're gonna turn into that and turn there.
And widen it, so they can get into the, it would be like one in and one out.
So they, they won't be able to.
Otherwise, otherwise you have, you have two driveways that would just need separation because of the size of the property.
It's janky. I know that's how they want it, but that's. I guess what I'm saying is it makes our city look not so organized, you're gonna turn in on this road, that was just gonna be an alleyway, old alleyway, then turn into here. Oh, that's how you get into your property, when, because you wanna save some money and not buy this. Oh, that's how you get into your property, because you wanna save some money and not buy this piece of property here so you can build an actually nice driveway into your business.
And you need to close to the street at this point. Because the separation of the driveways has to be, that's why we start doing the, the shared accesses. Is in order to be able to meet the criteria that is in the transportation plan and, and transportation code.
I just don't like the
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
What's the requirement, distance wise, for driveways off of Main? Well, Kincaid, off, off the Main Street to the grocery store and the Apple Store is a shared access. If we have Kincaid, how far down Main must there be? I'd have to, I'd have to look at the code. Oh, okay.
But it's not going to be a
But on, but on arterial. That's not what I'm asking, Barry.
Okay.
On arterial, we've got three arterials, one is Wilson, one is Main Street and the other one is East Columbia Boulevard. And it, those, those, on the arterial, those spacings are a lot further apart than you
Than you think, so by, so by, so basically what they're doing is that they go back that shared access, which is the, well, the, that paved access, which is like the drive-through, I guess that's the right term for it, drive-through. They go back through there, they, and build, is it gonna be for the parking lot?
Yeah, the parking lot will be around the north side of the building and the, the east side of the building.
So the building will be set back by the way through the Main Street?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big problem.
Oh, there is?
Wow.
Right, vacant? I don't know, no, it's gonna be parking lot, parking lot.
Yeah, so do you know how far, how close that parking lot is gonna be to Main Street? Are we talking ten feet where the start of the asphalt is going to be?
Yeah, it's give or take. Right, between, between the existing multi-use map and the parking lot is gonna end up being about ten feet. And that will be landscaped and so on and so forth.
So that, that's the, that, I guess that's the only piece that I'm unders, having a hard time, so if the, so if that so it has something to do with the entrance that comes off of Main Street? That if you go off, I guess Main Street is arterial, in order to come off the arterial, does it have to be so many feet from that that drive-through parking, that drive-through part there? Huh?
That access?
Yeah, does it have to be so far away from that access of that drive-through? Is that what the issue is?
The way the property was split up, there's another lot that, that, between where Dollar General and Wilford.
Yes, we all know what that is.
They will end up, they, they will end up with a shared access there in the long run. So, so you'll have three properties and three different, and two different accesses between the two streets. So one on Wilford and one on Kincaid. Mm-hmm. And the one on Wilford, that's gonna be the fire department. Is that not true? Wilford is, there's another, but there's another lot between what the fire departments buy and there's gonna be about another one acre parcel between where the fire department property is and where the street is.
Right, that, that's gonna be vacant.
So that would be the corner, right?
Yeah, it would be that one corner of the side on the office.
And, and because of the, coming out of that, the difference of, of the height of Wilford and and Main Street is quite a bit, that's, that don't probably, their access is probably gonna be a shared access on the main as well. About where the two property, where the two properties go together.
Okay. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything good for the order?
The only thing I have is that we are ordering the dog park toys, you know, the fountain, drinking fountain and stuff like that. And
Fins?
The fence should be here in the middle of the month.
So we can have a grand opening?
Oh, I don't know. You know, I used to be a party girl, but I'm not so much anymore. Oh, yeah.
Is that it?
I have another question.
Yes.
What about the OCDC building?
Wow. So, yes, we just signed another grant extension through December thirtieth of this year because the final project came in under budget and they had about half a million dollars left. And instead of just giving it back to the state and the state's really like, we really don't want them back, so if you can spend it. So they had some items on a wish list that they have moved forward with, but to cycle, the other supplies for construction, everything is being delayed for delivery and manufacturing. So we're hoping that, and if the weather holds up, because it's also dependent on the weather for the playground horse driver, hopefully everything is done by the end of this year and over Christmas break, they will be moving in and opening in January. If our weather does not hold up, the Ford River can't be poured until about April, because we know our weather and it has to be consistently above fifty degrees for them to pour that. So if we can't get it this year, we're looking at April, but we're all hoping this year.
Is, is there any district number or number I guess?
Um. No, I think it's just the Ford River. They have like three different playground areas for the different ages that they serve.
Anybody else have anything?
I just wanna say I love the sign.
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I don't have my hand raised, because I don't, I don't have it on here. I was just gonna say, I really love the new sign, you guys, it actually has reminded me of our own meetings a couple of times from my phone, so I, I just, and the updates are great, I'm just, I really love it, so thank you.
Thank you. Having hearing nothing else, I'd like to thank everybody online for showing up and participating and I hereby adjourn to speed.